We'll call the meeting to order as you stand for the pledge of allegiance, ask your pen and graph for allegiance in that, then we're gonna have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Amen.
First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, but I'm gonna ask for a motion to amend the agenda first. Do we have a motion?
I so moved.
Second, Gary?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda? Signify by a state in eye.
Eye.
Any opposed? Now, do we have a motion to change the date of the next school board meeting?
December.
December, from December 14th, December 12th at 6 o'clock.
I so moved.
I'll say, any discussion? All in favor, signify by a state in eye.
Eye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is recognition. Mr. Chairman, we've got a large number of students we'd like to recognize tonight. And first, I will call up Ms. Tanya Kennedy with Lee County Mate Team. You all know we've had robotics in the mate team for a little while now, and last year they went to Colorado to compete in a, almost a national competition, but I believe it was a world competition. But I'll let Ms. Kennedy tell about all the good things we got going with the robotics team.
Yes, so I'm here today, Sydney Nicky and Am can be here, and our other mentor, Jerry Robinette can also make it. So, everybody who knows me knows I'm not at the forefront of anything, I'm just kinda in the background. But I'm here today to recognize our kids who went to Worlds this summer for their competition, that they spent time working in at ETSU, they qualified third in their region, and so we went on to Worlds and they qualified, I think, 22nd there out of 37 teams that competed. So, we're very proud of those guys. So, we want to bring them in, let them tell you a little bit about what they do and what our robotics team is about, and honor them a little bit with some certificates and give them some trophies. Bring it up here a little bit. Turn it over. This way. So, this is, this is the ROV that they built this summer. Y'all come on in. So, we've actually got two teams with us today. So, I'll start with the younger team because they also qualified at our regional. They, they were first in their scout class. We had three members, one of them's not here tonight. So, we have Levi Jones and Ritten Britton. So, I'm gonna let them start by telling you what their job was on their team and what they did, and then we'll move on to our high school kids.
Hello, my name is Levi. I'm in sixth grade. I was head of electrical and tether manager.
Hi, hi. I'm Ritten Britton. I've been doing mate robotics for around three years now. And I was the pilot, and I was the head of construction for our ROV.
So, do you want to tell them a little bit about your competition, like what you have to do?
So, what we have to do in our competition is do tasks using our ROV and the claw that we put on front of it. And like what we had is a, we had a, like a small box that we would do three buttons, then we had one thing on the side to control our claw. We'd move forward, up and down, through the water, picking up things from a prop's manager, and putting them in specific areas for a time limit, and also bringing props from under the water back up to gain points and win.
So, those competitions simulate real world challenges that are, that we face every day. A lot of these, of course, are in rivers. They would have to fly over an area and count frogs that were in Lake Titicaca. That was one of the tasks they had to do. Another task was, you know, placed down in the oceans. So, we've had several different ones. But these guys did exceptionally well to just have three on their team. They had a lot of jobs to do between just the three kids. And I wish our other one chance, Wright, could have been here tonight, but we do want to recognize them for their first place win at that regional. And on to our others. We're still missing two members tonight, our CEO. These teams are actually set up to be like businesses, so they're, they have to go in front of a panel of judges, even our younger teams do as well. They go in front of a panel of judges, they present their ROV as a product that they're trying to sell. So, everybody has a job as part of the business. And our CEO, Clara Cox, couldn't make it tonight because she has volleyball game. Then we have another member that couldn't make it as well, Atlee. Oh, Atlee, you snuck in on me, Atlee. Atlee is here, sorry. So, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and tell you what their job was, and then they can tell you a little bit about their experience in Colorado this summer.
Alright. I'm Jacob Elkins. I was the pilot programmer for our ROV.
I'm Wesley Honeycutt. I was the manipulator operator for our team.
I'm Luke Young. I was the tether manager and programmer.
I'm Atlee McAllister. I was prop manager.
Alright, so tell them a little bit about your venture in Colorado, and something about your field here and what your ROV does.
It's been a little bit.
It has been a little bit. So, they, they worked all through summer, all of July, and our competition was what, July 20 something? We spent about a week in Colorado. It was a three-day competition. They had to compete and present in front of the judges. But they have to come in and explain all of this. They have to pass certain safety inspections before they're even allowed in the water. So, although our state regional where they presented at ETSU, there was a lot of things that, to make it to Worlds, they had to fix that's not, that would not have qualified there, they wouldn't even been able to get in the water. So, that would have been a lot of money spent to drive to Colorado and then, and not even be able to get in the pool. So, we had a lot of work to do during the summer. They all worked very hard to get there. We practiced at Pennington Pool quite a bit, tried to get the public involved to come out and watch and see what was going on. These kids do a lot of outreach as well. They go into the schools and do STEM nights, and they try to teach the younger ones about it. So, now we're introducing our new robotics this year. We've already picked up two extra teams this year. So, we'll have some more, hopefully, again, when mate season comes around, we'll even have more kids next year. But y'all don't have anything to tell about Colorado? We had an interesting time, a 22-hour drive across country to go to Colorado with a few kids. It was an adventure in itself. But if y'all have any questions for them, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer them.
Ms. Kennedy, I know I went to the one, one of the ones at East Tennessee State, and tell me if I'm right. I know a lot of the teams they compete against have sponsors.
Yes.
And corporate sponsors, so you've got to understand that we don't have that, but our kids have been able to compete with anybody in the world, and very impressive that they can do that without the backing that some of these places have.
Yeah, some of them have Eastman backing them up. I mean, they've got engineers as mentors. We're just science teachers and ITRTs and, you know, cybersecurity teachers. We're not anything that has special like those engineers can do, so.
Well, you are special, and why we want to recognize you, what you do.
So, I'm gonna go ahead and give them their certificates and hand out their trophies to them and let, you know, just give them a little recognition. So, the first one was Clara Cox, who could not be here tonight. Jacob Elkins. Levi Jones. Chance Wright could not be here tonight, and Ritten Britton. Thank you guys for having us. We appreciate it each time we come. They should not be this shy. We've been here several times now.
Kennedy, you'll give them the trophies too?
Yes, I am. I'm gonna give all those trophies. Last year, we had three different hands going, and I don't have that this year. Alright. Jacob Elkins. Wesley Honeycutt. Atlee McAllister. Luke Young. Clara's not here tonight. Chance is not here. Let's see. Levi. These other trophies here are the ones they won at their regional competitions. This one is Ritten Britton. These are the Plaque St. One. This was the Champions Award that our scout team won for their first place, and of course, their engineering. They also won engineering award. So, you have to present a notebook in front of, for the judges to look at. It has to show all your spending, all of the jobs that these kids are doing, the time they've spent. Everything's kinda documented along the way, so they also won first place for that. And then, we have our third place Ranger class. That was our high school team here. And this was for third, third place qualifying for Worlds. That's a big feat for us. And then, first place for our little scout team over there. Again, thank you all for having us.
And trust me, he stood his tall for when the robots and stuff are in the water and they're out there taking care of him.
They love to talk. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, next, we have Ms. Heather Kraus here with Frontier Health to honor the poster contest winners for the 23-24 school year.
Hi, my name's Heather Kraus. I'm with Frontier Health. We appreciate the partnership that we have with Lee County School System to provide mental health services across the county. We were able to write a grant and receive some funding for those services that we offer at the high schools, middle schools, and alternative education. Part of our grant is to increase awareness about mental health and also to reduce stigma. To do that, we had a poster contest where students had the opportunity to submit a poster. We had 147 entries, which was a lot. And the most impressive thing about our posters this year, we also done this contest last year, was to see the growth in our students, a greater understanding of mental health issues. And the artwork was phenomenal. So, out of the 147 entries, we're going to recognize the top 10. The, we have a first, second, and third place, and then the rest of the 10 will receive honorable mention. And the first person there to receive the honorable mention is Hunter Lawson.
I think only the top three are present.
Okay, alright. So, Hunter Lawson, he's from Pennington Middle School, Saxon from Jonesville Middle School, Madison Barnes from Elydale, Chloe Rogers from Jonesville Middle School, Shirley Washburn from Thomas Walker High School, Koda Keisha Cordell from Lehigh, Alyssa Raines from Lehigh. Those are the students that received honorable mention. All of those students, actually, everyone that entered the contest will receive a tote with some mental health awareness items. Each of the honorable mentions will also receive a certificate here. And then, our top three contestants, our third place poster is for Hannah Cowan. I believe she's here with us. Hannah. Brought Hannah's poster to share with everyone. Congratulations. Shows the insight that you have about the struggles that people face, and I think in mental health issues, there's something that touches each of us in our lives in some way, ourselves or someone in our family. So, I appreciate you. Here's your recognition certificate there, and here is your gift card. I'd like to, if you don't mind, need you to sign this before you leave. I'm just gonna give this to you, and if you'll sign that and give that back to Mr. Schell. Alright. Thank you. Let's congratulate Hannah. Our second place winner is Nicole Hurd. We have Nicole's poster with us here. Look at this one. Have a lot of insight in about what people's struggle is. So, great work. Congratulations. Yes, I'm sorry. Here's your certificate from Frontier Health, and your gift card. And if you don't mind to sign this where I'm giving the gift card for our grant. Thank you. Congratulations. And our first place poster is Patricia Bigg from Thomas Walker High School. Patricia could not be here tonight. She has a volleyball game. Okay, well Patricia. Yeah, so here is Patricia's R word. Patricia will actually receive two gift cards. She will also, you will see her artwork display on two different billboards in our county through the month of November. So, this is her poster. Phenomenal. So, I hate that she couldn't be here, but congratulations. Definitely a lot of art, talent artistically, and also understanding of the struggles of mental health. Thank you all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we also have with us tonight, Ms. Amy Beington from 4H. Another group of kids I think that did well at a national competition.
Yeah, and I will start off. I have another coach. Their coach came in tonight. So, we had Andrea Hedner in our office, and she's the Family Consumer Science Extension Agent. So, these three did compete at the national contest for 4H. So, they actually got to go all the way to Texas to compete in this contest. And it's a lot like CHOP. So, does one of you all want to explain what your contest is?
Not yet.
So, you're given a key ingredient and 40 minutes to make an appetizer, entree, healthy dessert, or main dish. So, our key ingredient was salmon. So, you, you use your pantry items, and then you cook your dish. This isn't really about taste, it's about the presentation you give about nutrition, safety, and my plate. So, they have to do all, all of that, and they're, they don't know their ingredients until like they get up there. But they actually placed third in the nation, and they got to go to the State Fair of Texas, and that's where they host this national contest. And of course, the first two teams were from Texas that won, but this was their, this was their first, this was their, this was their first year competing, the first time trying this contest. And I really love this team and the fact that you've got two Lehigh and one Thomas Walker student on this team. So, it's just a really nice representation across the county. So, we just wanted to share with you that they did this well, and that they're students in the school system, and that they're a blended team.
Good job.
Yep, we can do that. Which is Cameron. And Tyler. And actually, I didn't say their names, and that'd probably be good, but we have Tyler Bells, Mai Estiveria. No, no, I try every time, and I end up something wrong every time, and Cameron Lee from Thomas Walker. Alright, guys. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, our last recognition, and certainly not our last, we've had now four state team champions in Lee County. First was a 1977 Dryden Lady Crusaders basketball team, then a 1988 Jonesville Bulldog Football Championship, then a 1990 Lehigh Golf Championship, and then it went 33 years, and then Tuesday, Lehigh brought home the second state championship for Lee High School. So, tonight, we have with us the golf team and Coach Barry Adia. So, if you all come up and I announce you, I think, I hope we got everybody with us here. In no particular order, Walker Baker. Bryson Cooper. Hunter Johnson. Hank Kinzer. Jacob Leonard. Randy Litten. Cameron Mosley. Dylan Mosley. Braylon Penderman. Coach Barry Adia. 33 years between state champions. Coach, we're proud of you all. Guys, I, I'm fortunate enough, I didn't mean to cut Ms. Johnson off Tuesday night to get in the parade and the caravan there. You all know I serve at the will and the pleasure of the school board, and I had one school board member telling me what to do. But it's a little different than we, when we won it in 1990. It was a two-day tournament at that time, so you could have an off day. You all did it on one day. I was fortunate enough to attend the district tournament, I think some of the board members did as well, and the regional tournament. Didn't make it to the state tournament, but we are very proud of you. I think Lee County is very proud of you. I hope you saw that when you came through Pennington and Jonesville that night, and all the people who came out. But all of you young men, you made us proud, and Coach, you made us proud. I know you're not a man of merit, so say a few words here.
Well, I thought what was so overwhelming about it was that we went in their backyard and three-time defending state champion on their home court, said they play every single day for probably, you know, 300 days a year, and got the cheese. I haven't told you I was a pro, but that was awesome.
And here's the trophies to break it.
Yeah, there you go.
For the region and state. Hold them up there, boy.
Yeah. This, this region was also the first time in 33 years that we've won the region. And of course, the state was 33 years, because every reporter I talked to reminds me, "It's been 33 years since y'all won." Yeah, well, tell me again. We just heard that 18,000.
And the great thing about this is, is every member on this team will be back next year.
Yeah.
To go right back to number two.
Yeah, I'd be about, if about half of them are seniors, I'd be about crying about that. Thinking about next year. Play job, guys.
Congratulations.
And I know some of the board members were at, at the state event, and all the district and region, I'd ask you all to say some words as well. Barry, congratulations.
Congratulations, Coach.
All you.
Coach of the year, and we had, Walker was the.
Player of the region.
Player of the region, yes, yes. And all of them got medals.
You guys need to know that winning a state championship is something obviously doesn't happen very much, especially for Lee County. It was much more than just winning a state championship. If you notice, a lot of the old people had tears in their eyes. It was a point of community pride.
And Coach did too.
Yeah, Coach broke down. I said, "I had you on the tape doing that." But rightfully so, because it was tremendous. And you notice the crowds that came out, and you've inspired the community. And just remember, let's do this for another two or three years, okay?
There's one thing I would like to say, is you young gentlemen, a lot of people are gonna be looking up to you. So, make sure that you make good choices, and there'll be a lot of people that follow that, so. We like to say this, we like to say this trickle down to other sports too.
And I want to say too, you know, you know, we couldn't ask for a better group of kids than what we've got right here.
That's right.
They represent, they represent not only their families, but their school, the community, just with honor, dignity, everything that they do. I mean, they're.
Right.
And I'm sure, I'm sure their parents don't worry about them when they know they're on the golf course. Ain't too much trouble getting into it.
And I know I'm the superintendent of Lee County Public Schools, but you all made me proud to be a general. I'm an alumni, so I can say that. And I'm alumni of the golf team, so I can say that as well. So, you all made me proud, district, region, and state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna let all the parents know that I mentioned Mr. Dean today. I think we're gonna, the other board members agree, you better disagree with me all. We're gonna, we're gonna have a cookout for the team, and the parents, and brothers and sisters, and we're gonna get you some really good steak or whatever you want. And we're gonna, we're gonna take care of you all and just have another celebration, because we don't ever want this feeling to die.
If you can get it next year.
There you go.
Yeah, more cheese.
We are very proud of you all.
Thank you all.
And you know.
Thank you all.
Bus driver of the year.
Okay, next, we have public comments. Anyone wish to address the board? I just want to make a quick comment. How I think you alluded to, just how needed it is that Mr. Dean was a member of the 1990 golf team and now superintendent. Not many people could, of any situation, any sort, could say they was a member of the last one and now be over all these kids. So, I just want to bring that to light, and I mentioned it to the region. I said, "You're gonna, this is gonna happen." And so, we just love him and what he does. But that, that's a neat feat, I think, to be, have been on that team and now be superintendent of schools. It made me feel a little old, because I, I went down there and I watched all of them tee off on number 10 at the region, and I don't remember hitting the ball that far. I don't remember. I would hate to play against these kids nowadays, but it, it meant a lot. And when Nancy told me that they were lining up, I had been to Leonard Hensley's friend service, and I jumped back in some clothes and put on some red, and that's when she told me, "Just, I see you, cut in front of the next car." Luckily, I didn't get arrested in Pennington, it was a legal U-turn, but I was happy to be a part of it, and it, I think it's helped this entire county. And, you know, only four of them in the history of Lee County Public Schools as far as team state champions, and they need to be proud of themselves, and I know we're all proud of them as well. Yeah, sure.
We want to see a new sign out there for all the 1990 and this year. Have a nice one put up up there and for the coming years.
Let's make, yeah, so we can add.
Yeah, we can add to it, yes.
Any other public comment?
My name is Susan Baker Fish, and I would just like to bring to your attention chorus for students choir that's been taken out of their middle schools, and that is so much needed, just as these children have been raised and I was not here with their sports. I'm so proud of them. Some students don't have those talents. A chorus would be such a benefit to our students, if you don't mind. I've got my phone out here, but one student so kindly wrote to me a letter, but she addressed it to you, and she says, "To Lee County School Board Members, my name is Bethany Davis, and I was a choir member from middle school all the way up through high school. Choir not only is an outlet, excuse me, choir not only was an outlet to express myself, but it also shaped me into the person I am today. By the time I reached off grade, I already had a basic understanding of how to read music, tune music, and able to sight sing utilizing solfège and the corresponding hand signals. Also had two amazing experiences going to all-state district. When I got the chance to sing with a large, sizable of children my age from all over our district." She goes on to talk about how she was in off-state in Richmond, Virginia. She talks about this She talks about this is the name only a few of this is the name only a few of the major choir experiences that I obtained throughout my school years with Lee County Public Schools. Although these opportunities were amazing, the main reason I decided to choose choir as my elective middle school and continue through high school. She talks about her experiences, she said, I am the person that I am today because I chose choir in middle school. It was the start of my passion that eventually led me to get a minor in vocal performances at Rafferty University. She says, my choir experiences gave me the confidence to do solo performances at competitions and sing at church. Every life decision, including deciding to take choir as an elective in middle school. She talks about advancing now, she's a speech language pathologist. Because of her chorus and choir in middle school, this advanced her. And um, I just want to bring that to your attention. Some of our kids, their only outlet may be music and art. I've had an opportunity to work with homeless people through the years in the past and their outlet was music and art. So Carrie Belcher does a great job with these students. And when we're at graduation, you're only seeing four and five students out there in chorus. It's a reflection of why we don't have any in our middle schools anymore. Uh, personal experience, my own son, uh, he was in a Christian school before we moved back to Lee County in twenty sixteen. I was so thankful when chorus was part of that because at the Christian school, we would go to Murfreesboro for training or for competitions. And then when we came back to Lee County, had he had not had chorus in middle school, I would have saw a different son, I believe. And one last thing, Dr. Timble Graham, we're focused so much on academics that we've taken out things like art, sewing, cooking, woodworking, music, and other things that introduce kids to careers. So I'd like to thank the board for the job that you're doing. Thank you, Mr. Dean, for the opportunity to speak tonight, but please give our students, who don't have the experience of athletes, to have chorus back in the middle schools. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Mikey?
Guess that's over its podium. You're you're not gonna see it, are you? I'm gonna try it out too. I'm Michael Hughes coming to y'all from Laffas, a member of the community and a coach. Um, when reviewing the pay scale of what the county's paying coaches, there's huge inconsistencies. Um, some sports do require a lot more and deserve to receive a higher wage and the sport I'm coming to y'all about is wrestling. Um, we spend over twenty weeks of our time with wrestling. The official season this year starts on November sixth and it concludes in February. Um, each week, we're up from Monday through Friday, three to six, and most of our tournaments, the way they do it now is on Saturdays, so we're spending our Saturdays away from family too. Um, this equals over three hundred hours we put in this program. Um, also on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we run a youth program and we probably average thirty to forty kids coming through there. Um, that's volunteer, we just do that on the Saturday. But we're trying to raise an interest and you know, be a feeder program is what we're working on. Um, we also coach the little school kids and they come up with us on our varsity practices. Um, after talking to some of the other schools in our area, we're the lowest paid coaches in southwest Virginia. And I know a few years ago, football was that way and I helped used to help coach football and you know, we all raised those supplements, so. I mean, compared to other sports, um volleyball, basketball, boys and girls, baseball, softball, they all head coach gets six, assistants get three. Wrestling right now is, I think it went up for the head coaches here, three thousand and assistants get one. And soccer is the same way. They get the head coach gets three and one. There's a big inconsistency there. So and while we've been here, wrestling's like nowhere to sport. We had to get down there and actually, we rolled around the kids and as we're getting older, it's not that easy. And so we take a beat and do it this sport. It's to me, in my mind, it's a little bit more difficult than other sports. And so um, and while we've been here, every year we've had, we took kids to the state tournament and they've placed. So we we're one of the more successful programs in Lehigh and we take a lot of pride in that. And we're not even, we don't even, we take a lot of pride in what we do, me and the head coach, Michael Garcia. Um, we're trying to raise better kids, not just better wrestlers. And they know we teach what we believe in and we've been pretty successful at that. So I just wish y'all would review the page, the wage scales and see if you can make it more consistent.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No other public comments or any uh point comments that I've considered? No?
I just have to recognize the Lehigh competition cheer team. They won first place at Salem last Saturday and uh hoping they'll go to state this year like they did last year. And if you ain't got a chance to watch them, go to watch them. It that I mean, that's to me, that's amazing to throw them in by up in our kitchen when I like. It's a pretty good.
Like Mr. Penigraff, you have to experience golf and cheer there.
They're really good. They're really good.
I'm just talking to her. I'd like to go watch them at Brown. I'm kind of playing the big man and was telling her about on the twenty-first, but I'd like to go and support the girls.
You do. Appreciate it. Next, I would ask for a motion to accept the consignment agenda which approves of which consists of approval of minutes from the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting, approval of claims and expenditures, approval of special education advisory committee, SEAC applications, approval of disposal of surplus property for school board policy D and disposal of surplus items, and authorization for the superintendent to fill vacancies existing or occurring between October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three through November ninth, twenty twenty-three. Do we have a motion?
I'll submit.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, seek about a study, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any reports of the board? Any reports of the superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, we have the listing of the King's Sport Times news right on. Uh, when you get a chance, I'd ask that you look at that. We have actually representation from all three middle schools this time, Elydale, Jonesville, and Pennington. So please take an opportunity to look at that and look at the the work that our young people do, uh, that they showcase. Also enrollment, we are up from twenty-seven eighty-three to twenty-seven ninety-nine at the end of September. Uh, we based the budget on twenty-seven ten, so we are above that. I will have you a modified budget, I hope, in November with the additional funding that we received with the budget they approved. They've still not released the cap tool, so I told you we were waiting on to make sure we can get you an approved budget. I plan to have that for you in November. You have in in your packet the Lehigh or Lee County Head Start Monthly Report and also let you know that they apply for the CACFP application for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, also, you have the operations update and the transportation update. If you have any questions on those, I'll try to answer those. Um, let you know that we're getting ready to develop the school calendar for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I do serve at the will and pleasure of the board, but I will tell you, I probably will not recommend half-days in the middle of the year. Um, early numbers that I I saw from the half-day that we had at the end of the first nine weeks, we had over seventy adults absent. And Lehigh alone had a hundred and ninety-four students absent on the half-day at school. Uh, we did that at the recommendation of the of the staff at the request so they could have time at the end of the nine weeks for grading, but it it's it's hurting on attendance. Uh, half-days just do not go well. So if you all have any comments when we start this early development, I just want to let you know and see if you've had any comments as we start this for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, on the Twilight School, currently, I think there's five students at Thomas Walker that's in the Twilight and Night School. There are three, I believe, at Lehigh with two more, I think, potential. So right at eight to ten kids that were serving at the Night School to try to help them with another opportunity to get a diploma. So I want to give you an update on that. And then October is the month that we have a whole lot of stuff going on, so I'll go through this. It's bullying prevention month. Um, you know, state changed their laws and now if we are notified or we're aware of a bullying incident, the schools have twenty-four hours to notify the parents of bullying, so we're trying to take this as serious as possible, but it is bullying prevention month. October the second was National Custodian Day. We've got a good group of custodians who want to recognize them and all the work they do at the schools. October the second through the sixth was Farm to School Week. We live in a very rural community, we still got a lot of farmers and it's important that a lot of our students understand where that food comes from that they eat every day. Dyslexia Awareness Week, October the second through the eighth. Need to focus a lot on that. We've got some students that have a hard time reading and some don't have the ability to read, so need to be aware of that. October the sixth was National National Coaches Day. Um, coaches have a lot, a big impact on our students and we appreciate what they do and and they can make a difference in in some of our students' lives.
Yeah.
October the ninth through the thirteenth, National School Lunch Week. We appreciate all of our ladies and gentlemen in the cafeteria and all the hard work they do to feed our children every day. October the sixteenth through the twentieth, National School Bus Safety Week. Um, it's important that people understand when school buses are out that we're picking up the the future of our society and I think we've turned a few people in this year that have blown by those stop signs when people have uh been stopped to pick up kids and they need to understand that I've talked to the sheriff and 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 the state police and I've asked if they try to get these people because if you've ever seen a bus video when somebody's trying to cross the road and you see a car go between them and the bus, it's probably one of the scariest things we've ever seen and I mean, it's not a surprise every day that we have school when the buses are on the road. So we we need to make sure that people are aware and take care of that. And if you see anybody do it, get a tag number, we'll turn them in. Um, October the twenty-third, twenty-third through the thirty-first, National Red Ribbon Week, drug awareness. We've had that problem in our community for some time. It continues to be a problem, not just in our community, but across the country and the world. Um, trying to make people aware of that and make a difference there. October's also National Principal Month. We have one principal, I think, still with us here. Appreciate everything they do, making our schools run the way they do day to day. It's also Disability History and Awareness Month. Make sure we're aware of the individuals in our society who have disabilities and aren't aren't able to do some of the things that other people are doing. We take care of them and make all the uh opportunities that we can for them. And it's also Breast Cents or Awareness Month. I think everybody's had somebody that's had that involved in their family and just be aware that that's also in October. That's all I have with the chairman.
Then I just thought that I had actual principal month. We've got some mighty fine principals. I've met them all of them and talked with them and been been around them and stuff and they're doing a fine job and they're well respected. And I I just thank thank them for what they do for us.
I probably don't tell them enough how much I appreciate it. I try to do that. I hope Mr. Penigraff knows how much I appreciate them and uh they make our job here a lot easier because they deal with the day-to-day work. Happens at school, I know sometimes when they have to make decisions that don't make parents happy, they call us and they're usually not happy with us because uh, you know, we trust our parent, our principals and and we back them and then they, I think, sometimes they go and thank you all and fuss at you all because of the chain of command there, but uh we do appreciate our principal and what you all do.
Amen.
Absolutely. They do a great job.
I don't think there's any unfinished business, is there?
No, sir.
Um, Rob, um, we forgot to mention Leonard Hensley. Uh, he was a maintenance, school bus driver, maintenance worker for many years and passed away of cancer just this past week. And uh he was a mighty fine person and a good employee, so.
He requested the maintenance to be his pallbearers and I took his best to let him proceed.
And they they the maintenance crew and the bus shop did a great job uh at the request of the family and uh he was a great worker. I think they had, they received friends Tuesday night and then they had the burial Wednesday and I know his um mother and his father and his family said to thank everyone at the school system for everything that they did and uh, you know, they they asked, we do that and we make sure that it was arrangements were made and he had asked to be buried in his uh magnitude form. We told him we would make sure that that and that did that.
Okay, good. Next, it's action and discussion items. Mr. Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I'm asking that we have a motion to join the Coalition of Small Rural Schools of Virginia. You have a handout in your packet for that. Um, like it has approximately seven thousand current members. We would make eighty, this is made up of rural um school divisions. They work with our legislative leaders to make sure that rural school divisions are given their opportunities, their fair share of um things across the state. Um, I think the rural coalition had a lot to do with some of the money that was in the budget the last year or two and I would ask that we join that and I'm asking for a motion to.
Do we have a motion?
I'll submit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, seek about a study, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Dean?
Thank you, sir. Um, last month, Matt McFadden from Secure Solar was here and did a presentation on the second phase of the solar projects. He mentioned Dryden, Thomas Walker, Elydale, and Pennington. I am asking that we approve Dryden, Thomas Walker, and Elydale, but not Pennington. The reason is they will put these on roofs of buildings that have new roofs because you want a roof that you don't have to touch for a while. Pennington still has a warranty on it of seven years and they want us to pay to have it restored for a twenty-year warranty. And I really can't justify doing that when it already has seven years on it. When we need a new roof, we might look at doing it then, but I can't justify doing it now. Um, most of Dryden has a new roof on it, that's the area they would look at. Almost all of Thomas Walker has a new roof. They said they would probably put it on the south-facing part of the metal building or metal roof at Thomas Walker. I did ask, they said it would not involve penetration of the metal roof itself. They've got clips that go on the the grooves so that wouldn't actually be drilling any holes in the metal roof. And then Elydale, they should in the next week or so finish up the roof at Elydale, but I'm asking that you all approve Dryden, Thomas Walker, and Elydale in Phase Two, but not Pennington.
Do we have a motion?
I'll submit.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, seek about a study, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss personnel as a code of Virginia, section two point two, Act three seven one one, subsection A one. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, seek about a study, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session. Chairman, Cameron Mosley's phone is back there somewhere. Can you grab it and give?